Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled February 13th, 2023, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Havreford Township. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik.
President.
Commissioner Forstie-Groh.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
I now turn the floor over to my colleague Commissioner Gondik with some special guests for today's Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to take a moment to welcome in attendance here today two Cub Scouts from Cub Scout Troop 332, based out of Linwood Elementary School. They are Sebastian App and Brian Bankhead. They are here with their troop leader, Mike App. They have, they came today, they met with some of the members of the Board of Commissioners to kind of talk about what the Commissioners do and how Havreford Township is governed, and they are going to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Boys, if you could come up.
... to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands on the right, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Before we move to the next item, let me just report that our board met in executive session on January 23rd, 2023, and also met in executive session on February 6th, 2023, and in both of those circumstances, we discussed legal, personnel, and real estate matters. The next item on our agenda is for this board to consider the promotion of one of our officers to Sergeant. Ms. Dawson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I begin, I want to make a public service announcement, which is to remind everyone that the Havreford Township Police Department continues to accept applications for the entry-level position of Officer within the department. The closing date for all applicants is Wednesday, February 22nd at 3:00 PM. So for more information, please visit the Havreford Township Police Department website and in my public service announcement. Now onto the business at hand. I'm here in my role as the Administrator of the Civil Service Commission. As a reminder, this board approved the list of candidates eligible to be promoted to the rank of Sergeant on May 21st, 2021. At this time, I want to present on behalf of the Civil Service Commission the following three candidates for your consideration to be promoted to the rank of Sergeant. Michael Kenny, Kimberly Huganair, and Brian McDonald. I seek a motion from the board to appoint one of these candidates to the position of Sergeant.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. I will entertain a motion.
President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Kenny to the rank of Sergeant in the Havreford Police Department.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other motions? Move to close these motions.
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will now consider the motion to appoint Officer Michael Kenny to the position of Sergeant. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondik.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie-Groh.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
On behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners. We're always delighted to provide this service to the board and to the township. Thank you.
You are most welcome. Thank you. Chief?
Commissioner, Commissioners, members of the Havreford Township Police Department who were in attendance to support Sergeant Kenny. So Sergeant Michael Kenny was hired by the Havreford Township Police Department on September, in September of 2011. Mike is a graduate of Westchester University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Mike has served in the following capacities: Officer in Charge, Field Training Officer, Honor Guard Member, Sub Bike Officer, a K-9 D Corps Decoy, and serves as Temporary Detective for a year. During his time here, Mike has been awarded two Officer of the Year accommodations, two Life Saving Commissions, and three Unit Commissions. Mike comes from a police family. His father is retired captain from the Upper Darby Police Department who is here. His brother Sean currently serves as Lieutenant in the Upper Darby Police Department. His father-in-law Tom Thiel is a retired detective from Montgomery County DA's office. Mike is here tonight with his wife Lauren, his two children Cassidy and Taylor, his father Mike Kenny, his mother Diane, his father and mother-in-law Tom and Kathy Thiel. So, Mike.
Congratulations.
Mike, congratulations.
Commissioners, as we move forward with our police department, we see younger and younger people getting hired and getting promoted, which is the future of the Havreford Township Police Department. So as usual, I always thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome, people. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll just take a minute while, while some of our guests go out there for pictures. Hi, before we proceed, I just would ask one thing of my colleagues as well as anybody in the audience who comes up, just to try to keep a decent distance between their electronic devices and our microphones. That's part of what's responsible for this really cool echo that everybody's feeling right now, so. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from Havreford Township Library on the library renovations.
Good evening, I'm Phil Goldsmith. I'm president of the library, and we thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to present what we believe are exciting plans to modernize our public library. First, I want to recognize my colleagues on the Board of Trustees, many of whom you have selected. They consist of a head of a private K to 12 school, a certified public accountant, a civil engineer with 40 years of experience in the construction industry, the recently retired head of Widener University Library, a communication and marketing professional with two decades of experience, another head of school who has also served as an assistant to the president of Princeton University. You have placed this project in very, very good hands. I also note our former board member, Jim Brown, sitting over there, and I thank him, and Christopher Blackwell, who's been fighting this battle for over a decade ago, who's also president of the board. He is here. I thank them for being here. Also members of our architectural firm, Bill Holloway, Eric Traynor, and Lee Casatio, who will tell you he used to ride his bicycle from his home in Havertown to the library when he was young, many years ago. And of course, we have Ken Matthews, who's our construction manager, you'll hear from him later, and Sukrit Goswami, our director, our librarian, who joined us five years ago. He's armed with years of library experience, as well as a master's in business administration, a master in information library science, and a bachelor of science in economics. Bear with me, I hope I can work this technology. Okay. In a book called "The Library Book," Susan Orlean's Chronicles of 1986 Tragic Fire That Levelled the Los Angeles Public Library, he said, "The library is a gathering pool of narratives and of the people who come to find them. It is a whispering post. You don't need to take a book off a shelf to know that there's a voice inside that is waiting to talk to you." Tonight, I want to take you inside our book, our library book, the Havreford Township Free Library Book. Yes, it is still full of books. Contrary to some reports, people still borrow and read books. As Mark Twain said, "The reports of my death are greatly exaggerated." Our statistics tell us that. The only real drop we have seen over the years were, not surprisingly, when we were hampered, if not closed during the pandemic. But once we opened, the books came flying off our shelves again. People read and love books, but our library is much more than books. Come with me and see what I see when I come and enter our library. See children there doing fire safety week. They'll see kids, parents with their babies, storytime. You'll see teens and tweens engaging in team building work. You'll see teens in the hub doing homework and crafts. You'll see seniors attending a hands-on program. I think they're playing Canasta. I don't know if that's hands-on, but you will see seniors taking great courses. You'll see when we're outside, when the weather is good, the library's walls come down, they're joined, adults join a program in the park, or children's fire safety week in the park. Our library is a dynamic community hub. It's arguably the heart of Havreford. It's where people come to enrich their lives for lifelong learning, creativity, to socialize, and for culture. It's also a place where someone can utilize our computers and reference materials to search for a job, play cards or read a newspaper, or study, take a cooking class, or use a conference room for a meeting. It's where students can come and chill out after school, or play a video game. I might be exaggerating on this next point, or do their homework. But let me be honest and tell you what our patrons don't often see, but our employees sure do. They see an antiquated elevator. They see subpar wiring for state-of-the-art technology. They see broken toilets, inconsistent heating and air conditioning. I like to say the heat works during the summer and the air conditioning works during the winter. An outdated security system, inefficient use of space, and all this adds up in dollars and cents throughout the year, throughout the years. Discussions for a new library have been ongoing for decades. During that time, we have asked people what they want to see. We've had surveys in 2003, in 2005, in 2007, in 2008, 2017, and ongoing community input and suggestion. This is what we hear. They want more community meeting space, more comfortable seating and study areas, more space needed for after-school hours, green and ADA compliant building, a distinct space for seniors, teens, and children, and yes, more parking. For years, we have explored, explored, searched, and debated various options. After many of those options, we ruled out, for one reason or another, the decision was made to stay where we are. It's actually a great location because we are nestled between the high school and the middle school. In essence, we make up an educational campus or corridor. But our existing building is too small, too rundown, too out of date. So we came up with a plan to expand it by adding an addition off the second floor and add essential technology and provide a good old-fashioned facelift. In April 2021, we appeared before you to tell you what we wanted to do. You accepted our plan to renovate and expand at our current location and gave us the go-ahead to proceed with the final decision and come back to you when we were done with that, which brings us to tonight. We are excited to share our plan with you. We are not proposing a BMW or a Cadillac. It's a plan that is significantly less expensive than if we had ended up at building at the Brookline site for other locations that have been debated, and we put up a brand-new library. It's a plan that allows us to stay where we are and yet add 30% more usable space for our patrons by expanding off the second floor and making better use of our lower level. Our plan is durable, it's practical, it's functional. We are melding the old with the new, and if I may say, be so bold, it's sort of the Havreford thing, mixing the old with the new, and that's what we're doing. So what I would like to do now is take you into our new building and have Sukrit show you floor by floor what we plan to do.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity today to present our plans in front of you. So I'll be walking you through our new building and floor plans in our next few slides. So our first floor, you will see that we have the new circulation desk, reference desk, three tutor rooms, two flex rooms, friend's book sale area, local history collection, public computers, a laptop bar, and living room, which will provide a safe, quiet place for adults and seniors. So this is the main, like, first floor plan, and over here, you will see that those dotted lines, which I might be able to show you here. So these dotted lines represent the addition on the second floor. So the only change here is the parking instead, instead of the right side, which is currently, which is like right here, it will be under that building, the addition. Now, this is exactly the same, just so I wanted you to, show you in detail. So as you can see, it will be a very spacious space right here when you enter, very welcoming space for our patrons, for our community members. Right in front, you will see the circulation desk. On the right side, this is the laptop bar, which we are hoping our, like, young adults and even the people who are in, like, their twenties and thirties who like to sit on the higher elevated tables. On the right side here, we have the reference desk. Again, very welcoming, you will be able to, like, from here when you enter, you will have, like, a direct visibility to, like, where you're going. And right next to the reference desk, we have put four public computer desks. So when people who are using computers, whenever they need help from assistance from our reference librarians, they will be able to walk from here to there. And over here, you'll see the three tutor rooms we have created, and you will see later on, I'll show you pictures of, like, how we are envisioning, like, very, like, open, lighted, like, tutor rooms. And then back here, you see two flex spaces. You will see from our plans, we have been very conservative on assigning space to our staff. So this is a space which we will be sharing with public. When staff is not, when this is not going to be used by staff, then we want to make sure during our after-school hours, if tutors need additional space, these two flex rooms will be available to them. And then now, lastly, on this floor, I would like to talk about this. This is the place which is the living room experience, which we'll give to our seniors and adults. And from there, so this is what we are anticipating. So this is the rendering for which our architects have created for us, and this is what we will be going for when time comes. And this is an example of tutor rooms. Back there, you see, like, those, like, glass wall, this is from a renovated branch of Philadelphia Free Library, and this is, these are their tutor rooms. And then in the next slide, you will see this one tutor room. On one side, we have the whiteboard, and on the other side, we have the technology. And we all know how technology is important these days, so we are making sure that we are putting an infrastructure in which is going to be talking to us for, like, about 21st century. Now we move on to the second floor. In the second floor, we have a children's library. You will see the teen, twins library. You'll see four meeting rooms. You'll see one multi-purpose room, one tutor room, sensory space, intergenerational area, play areas, and innovation zone. So here again, when you enter from here, either from the, through the elevator or through your stairs, you will have direct visibility, visibility line to the extreme corner of the building. Right here is going to the children's circulation desk. On your right-hand side, you will see this other meeting room. And right after the meeting room, this is our teen library, our young adult area, and we are making sure that there's, this meeting room door also opens in that room in case we need to use or utilize more space for our kids. Especially, as you all know, we are in between middle school and high school. We do have, on an average, 50 to 100 kids in one day in our building, and we really are in dire need of space for them, and this, this plan takes care of that. And that's another reason we put Hub, which is our multi-purpose room, again, right next to our children area, in case we need to utilize that. We, of course, will be needing staff's help, and we'll be able to distinguish between, and part between teens and tweens. Other thing I want to talk about, there is a dearth of meeting, meeting space and public conference room in our township. Currently, our library only has three meeting rooms. In the new expanded building, the library will have six meeting rooms, four tutor rooms, two flex rooms, which will be open for public and which could be used as small meeting areas for staff and public. Actually, I also want to talk about this other meeting room we have created on the left side. This is going to be the sensory room. This is another big tutor room, and this is another meeting area. So these two meeting areas were created. This used to be our staff lounge. There used to be a lot of dead space over here. It's an old bank building, and there are two broken toilets over here which staff uses, and so we have created this space for community. The same thing over here, we have our tech services office over here at, at right now, and now we are creating the meeting room in that area. And right here at the front is the innovation, innovation zone, which is our makerspace. And while we're in makerspace, you might question, like, what exactly is a makerspace? What exactly is an innovation zone? So our innovation zone will provide a space for the community, young and old alike, to explore, create, invent, build, and collaborate with others. The wide variety of equipment and tools will provide a hands-on learning experience for patrons of all age groups. The makerspace will have stem and steam and hands-on learning equipment, including 3D printing, 3D scanning, crafting corner, sewing and embroidery machines, large format printing, laser engraving, cutting, audiovisual studio, and do-it-yourself tools, even gardening tools. And you'll see, like, next couple pictures, next three pictures, like, you will see, like, how different this room can be used. Over here, you're seeing this kid has opened up a desktop, so this is, like, he's working with the hard drives and the hardware. In the next picture, you're seeing that these kids are also, like, building some, like, totally different things. They have pliers in front of them, they have, they have screwdrivers in front of them, and of course, the laptop. And here, you see the adults using a library makerspace. And this, this picture is, like, we are putting in front of you is to just prove there's a community in the Midwest of 3,500 people, and this is their makerspace. Look at the size of the room and look how many people are using it. So this makerspace is a brilliant idea which will assist our young patrons, young community members. And this is a sensory room. We, sensory room is a unique space for children and adults on the spectrum to interact with an array of sensory experiences. Time in a sensory room helps children and adults improve their visual, auditory, and tactile processing, as well as fine and gross motor, motor skills. This space also provides a sense of comfort and helps young children and adults self-regulate their behaviors, which ultimately improves focus. There are quite a few pictures we went through, and this picture hit me because the last place I was, I was expecting to find a sensory room like this, this is in Qatar. So this is, I believe this is called Qatar National Library, and this is a beautiful sensory room, and if you have time, you can go and check their website, like, the amazing work they are doing, and I was very pleasantly surprised to see that. So that's why I chose this picture to show in front of you. Now, this is the preschool area, which, when I showed you guys the second floor and all the way and in the corner, so that's what we are anticipating. This is going to be teens and teen space. So a dedicated teen and teen space will provide seating to converse, seating to collaborate, seating to do homework for our teens and tweens who really need a safe space after school hours. This room will have a virtual reality, video gaming area, board game, and book discussion area. This space will also provide educational and entertaining programming while also hosting libraries' teen book and material collection. So now, I'll take you to the ground floor. So this is where we have our current community room. This community room will have after-hour access to public. It will have retractable walls to divide the room into two for smaller events. It also will have, the ground floor, the lower level, will also have workspace for staff and volunteers. It will have our new staff lounge. It will also have friends of the library workspace, and it will include staff's audiovisual lab to create multimedia content and programs where we also do podcasting, or we will do podcasting. And this is a floor plan, so there's not much change. On the right side, you will see is the community room. Of course, we are making sure we are future-proofing our community room with the technology. On the left side, you'll see staff lounge. This is the AV room, staff computers, and then the friends area. And I would like to end this by saying that in this new building, we will have improved technology space. There will be an AV lab to create multimedia contents and programs. There will be a robust Wi-Fi access for all, and Wi-Fi printing from personal devices throughout the facility and much more. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity, and now I would like Ken Matthews to come and talk to us about the budget and the timeline. And after that, we will have Phil Goldsmith coming back in front of you to making a final statement. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So as far as the project schedule goes, right now, we've started back in design back in September, so that process is continuing. Programming's done, that's how we've gotten to the point with this floor plan, and the goal is to try and have the construction documents done by May. So in between now and then, we'll be coming back to the planning board and going through the land development, working with Kelly and her department, going through all the permitting. We'll get that done over the next few months. So then the goal is to bid in June. It's a three-week period of bidding for It's a three-week period of bidding for publicly advertised bid, and then take, you know, it's all depends on the exact timing, but July and August would be to come back to you all to approve proceeding with the apparent low bidder. So that will take place, and then the idea is to start construction essentially immediately thereafter in the fall. It's roughly a 15, 16-month project schedule, so the building would be done around December 2024. And then, you know, obviously, a to-be-determined exact opening date, reopening date for the library. That's it as far as the schedule is concerned. Then we get to the project budget. So we had Bernard as the architect, as part of their scope of work was to provide a third party professional cost estimate for the drawings. So it's about 40% done with the drawings, send them to the professional cost estimator. They take about two or three weeks to put together an estimate, then we all review it as a team. So that's for the hard construction costs only. So that's the $14.5 million here. The soft costs for $4.3 million include cost for the architects, engineers, us as a construction manager, insurances, furniture, audio visual, those type of things. And then you have typically for a project, the renovation, you want to hold a decent amount of owner contingency. There's always change orders. You're built, we're building in a building that was built in the 30s or 20s. So there's going to potential unforeseen issues there. So you always carry a project contingency, and it gives you the total project budget of the 19.9 million. Up to the restart in September, there were $605,000 that had already been spent on those design efforts up until that point. And then just recently, unfortunately, the boilers had to be replaced this winter, and that was the other $183,000 that was spent to date. So other than that, Phil, you want to go to the next slide?
A couple of things I want to mention. There are, there will be solar panels on the roof, part of the roof. In terms of the, we'll probably be shutting down the library in August, going to be about two years. But during that time, we will be offering all the services we have today. We have found a location at the Manoa Shopping Center, the old CNM Sporting Goods store. There's probably some Eagle shirts still to be bought there, but I couldn't resist. And so we have signed a lease for them. It's about 3,000 square feet where we will be able to provide services. People can come and get books there. We will have some programs there. It will obviously be small, but we will be able to continue. There will be a drop box in front of the shopping center. We will also have programs elsewhere. Could be churches, it could be other locations. We're still sorting out those details. But the important thing here is that the library in terms of services will remain open. That's not to say we will be as robust as we are today, but we will do everything that we can. We're also working with Dave Berman. I think we have a subter bus that we may be rehabbing and providing services on the bus going around the community, which is a good idea, whether we have a temporary facility or not. And so we're excited about that. The other thing I would say is that after we were here in April of 2021, we went to the zoning board, and as the old funny thing happened on the way to the zoning board, that we got rejected, but we worked things out, including additional parking, which we will do, we have to do, because we cannot open the new building up until the zoning board is satisfied with what we're doing with parking. So that's, that's, that's a given, and we will continue to to work on that. So the the other thing is, the good news is, through hard work, through the township and our offices, we've have about $4.7 million that can go against that 19 million. One is a state RACB grant for a million dollars, a Keystone grant for $750,000, a federal grant for $2 million, and the library is contributing a million, 500, which we've already contributed, we will contribute another half a million. And we will also have fundraising program going on. We are in the midst now of, we've sent out an RFP to fundraising consultants, and we are getting those results back, and we hope to select someone within the month, and then we will start raising money for this project. So we are open for questions, and that's what we have. We think it's exciting, we think it's overdue, but we're think we're better off than if we'd done this five years ago, because I think we have a better plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of my colleagues have any questions for any of our presenters?
Yes, I have some questions. With regards to the, you know, I saw, well, first off, I just want to make sure I'm understanding some of the renderings, like the, the innovation zone, and then the sensory area. I apologize, I think I'm miscommunicating its title. Were those renderings what the desired final look is going to be? Because I believe there was a comment that one of them was taken from another library.
No, but these are, these are not ours. These we borrowed and stole from, you know, saw in examples when, so when we talk about maker spaces, you have a sense of what we're talking about. We will be designing our own.
Okay.
Type stuff, and the same thing with the sensory room. But there are, they're around all over, so we'll borrow and steal what we think is appropriate.
And I just wanted to just clarify. So with regards to the innovation zone, you know, and the maker space, you know, it looks like it's a, it's pretty neat kind of tech work lab. My question is, is does, when you put some, as opposed to a meeting room or a conference room, when you put something like that in there, I would imagine it will require some higher level of supervision or, or guidance. Also, I think that in one of the later slides, there was reference to kind of a technology space, improved technology space, same kind of concept. Are you, is this part of a plan to increase the staffing of the library, or how is that going to be addressed?
The later one, the technology spaces, that's in the ground floor, and that's for employees. So that the answer there would be, it wouldn't require any supervision, you know. But the maker space, yes, would require supervision, whether that comes from existing staff or additional staff, we're not sure yet. But I understand your question. Could it require more people? It might, but we haven't figured that out yet.
Okay. And obviously, my concern is, you know, while you're going to be coming to us and asking us to approve, to approve a large bond for the overall construction, you know, building the space can kind of set in motion, you know, a complete revamp of your overall operating budget. And so as a commissioner for the township, I just need to be conscientious of not only what's on the table today, but what could be coming down the road.
I don't think our operating budget will expand.
Okay.
Part of the savings will come from some of the money we have to repair things. So, but, you know, our, our goal is to set the operating costs where, you know, basically where they are.
With regards to the 19.9, for argument's sake, for conversation's sake, I'll round it to 20. So you made reference to some zoning contingencies that exist. I believe the zoning board basically is requiring you to come back before them and demonstrate additional parking of some caliber prior to giving you the relief to to open. Is that, is any of that cost factored into the 20, the 20 million?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not, it depends what we do with with the parking. We probably will require some more money for the parking, yes.
And again, I'm just trying to clarify the total amount. Outside of the 20 million, are there any other, I guess you would call it, you know, kind of wild cards or asterisks, other than the zoning?
Not, not that I'm aware of the architect, Scott. No. And we do have, you know, it's a healthy contingency.
Yeah, I did notice, and I'm assuming when you say the contingency, you're talking about the owner's contingency.
Yes.
And the owner's contingency, correct me if I'm wrong, is not money that's necessarily dedicated to a specific item on your plan. It's kind of, you know, if if something changes or if there's a problem, it kind of covers you, so you don't wind up with a shortfall. And I guess my last question, unless someone else wants to jump in. With regards to the library's contribution of $1 million, you said 500,000 was already provided?
Yes.
And then so it would be 500,000 more that you would have to fundraise?
No, no, $500,000 that we have now to give, and then we will have our own separate fundraising.
Again, so in total, you basically already have your 500.
Yes.
You're looking to raise another 500.
Yes. No. We've already, we've already given 500,000. That's in the cost, because we've been at this for a while. So that's 500,000 we were asked to give, and we did that several years ago. We're also now saying we will provide another $500,000. In addition to that, we're going to have a robust fundraising campaign. We haven't put a dollar amount there, because the first thing the consultants will come back to is tell us what they think we can, what the capacity in Haverford Township is in terms of raising money, but that will be added on to whatever we give.
I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I have some questions. Hi, Phil. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you, Sukrit. Thank you to everyone who's here. One question I had, as we looked at the images of different programming spaces and spaces with technology, I had a couple of questions. One is, given that this will attract so many more people to use the spaces, do you expect there to be a problem with capacity to still have people there to use the books in the library? And then you're also going to have additional people drawn to the additional resources that you're going to have there?
Well, we hope we get more people. But, you know, one of the problems we have now, and we really haven't spelled it out, is that we don't have separate spaces. So we have teenagers intermingling with young kids and seniors and so forth. So this separates it out, so it will also level whatever capacity issues we have. But hopefully, more people come. You know, one of the things we will have is we'll have more drop boxes in the area. So people that just come to return a book don't necessarily have to come to the library, they can go elsewhere and so forth. But we do hope we attract more people, but I don't think it will be that much that we won't be able to handle it.
No, increased use is good. The other question I had about some of this, about the same resources is, so when you say you have open space, there's less furniture, there's fewer pieces of technology, there's fewer wall, you know, there's fewer things that you really have to update. So if you have a room that's outfitted with the latest technology for AV, you're going to have to replace that more often, because, and it's going to be more expensive than some of the things that you're placing now. You have a lot of spaces like that, but you said your operating budget isn't expected to increase.
Well, the AV, the AV will be funded out of this, this project. Okay. In terms of repairing that, that will all be factored into our budget.
Okay, good.
I mean, the point of, the factor matters, we're, you know, we know we have limited amount of money. So if we're needed for there, it means we might not have something there, and that's part of the budgeting process.
Yeah, and it's not, I'm not questioning that. I guess I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, you're promising you're not going to increase your operating budget, and I don't want you to sell yourself short so that we can't keep the library up to the standards that we want. I think what you have here is a really high-quality, efficient, you know, high, you know, it's going to draw a real diversity of people to our community resource. I just want to make sure that you're, we're going to keep it up to the standards that we all want.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that you will, but I don't, you know, if that means you need an increase in your operating budget, I hope that we can be accommodating of that.
I think the, yes, we think we're going to have a, as I say, a real gem here, and we want to obviously keep it up and make sure the maintenance is right, and we got the right people, you know, doing all that. But on the other hand, we're not going to come to you and say we've added 10 more people. And one of the, getting to your point, one of the things we didn't do, for example, was go up a floor, because we knew that would take more people. So we've always been very cognizant of the staffing that we would be required based on what the configuration may be, so.
I was going to say with the rooms, you almost need fewer people because you could use cameras.
Let's say that again.
You could use cameras in terms of security, wouldn't necessarily have to hire people for that, but anyway, thank you. Thanks again for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Before this work starts, we've talked about, we're going to meet with, with everybody that lives around the area there, so we can let, let them know, like May or June, we'll have a meeting for all the, for the trucks that will be staged in all those areas, so everybody knows where they can't drive and what roads will be closed during this time.
We will have a very robust communication plan. We have about 20 constituent groups that we know we have to deal with, including the commissioner from our ward. Okay. You have your own separate segment there, but also people, the neighbors that are living around there, we've met with them when, before we came up with this plan, and where they objected, we've made changes and so forth, and we will be on top of the communications and letting people know what we're doing, when we're doing it, how we're doing it. But, you know, it's going to be messy.
All right, great. Well, thank, thank, thank you. I do actually have a couple of follow-up questions. So in viewing this presentation, it seems to me, and again, you know, what's being presented, it's, it's a nice presentation. I mean, what you're, what you're proposing is, is a nice proposal in terms of kind of the end result. You know, it's, you know, me, when I think of a library, I think of back when I was a kid, you know, when I was the Cub Scout age, and, you know, it was a place of, of just books and reference materials and so on. But it, this to me comes off as much more a community center. I mean, I'm assuming that that's kind of the vibe or the intent of this. And if I'm, if I'm misstating anything, please correct me, but this almost comes off as a little bit more of a community center for the township. My, my question is, with some of these specialized rooms, like the innovation zone, the technology, where do those come from? In other words, were there people or groups that were specifically kind of reaching out for these kinds of resources? Or were there, were there people on your staff who have seen them elsewhere and, and viewed them as, you know, potential positive add-on? I'm just curious, you know, where the more specialized rooms came from?
I think the, and I'll, Sukrit, I'm going to rein here. I think in terms of the community center, yes. I think libraries, that's what libraries evolved to, as a, it's where it's no longer just all books, and you have virtual books, and you've got ebooks, and you've got audio books, and you've got DVDs and meeting rooms. So we, we believe our library is a community hub. We think this will make it more of a community hub. We think that there's a dearth of community conference rooms in the township, frankly. We think that this will add to it and help groups that are looking for places to hold meetings and so forth, and that will add to the community, you know, hub type, type concept. In terms of, Sukrit, you want to talk about the maker space?
And that's actually a really good question you asked. So we observe as librarians, when we go to other libraries, when we go to conferences, and we see how much use the local communities are getting out of these maker spaces. Like what I explained in the pictures I showed, like how much different stuff is going on in those rooms, which our community is lacking. I don't believe there's any place in Haverford Township which can provide that all the like this, like technology, which can provide like do-it-yourself tools, and which can even like train and assist our kids, our younger generation in doing all that, and even for adults. So some maker spaces in some libraries also do some sessions, some classes for people who are starting their own small businesses. So there's like so much potential, and we have to start somewhere. And, and this is not something like we just, we just like came up with. We have seen how successful these areas, these spaces are in other libraries.
Well, thank, thank you for clarifying that.
Of course.
In, you know, in, you know, in identifying some of these, you know, community needs, obviously, it's not going to, in kind of going to a prior comment, you know, I could see that, you know, the final product, once it's open, attracting a wider berth of people to come there, both in, from Haverford Township and outside of Haverford Township. You know, with regards to the resources, is the intent for all of these resources to be free to the community, or are any of them intended at some point to be kind of pay-for-play as, you know, for lack of a better term, rental fees or technology use fees or anything like? rental fees or technology use fees or anything like that?
Well, this is a Haverford Township free library. So our intent would be to provide all these services for free.
Well, but when it comes to conference rooms, our policy now is we do charge. But if it's for a not-for-profit organization, we don't charge. But if it's a for-profit, we actually will ask for a donation or a contribution or some charge. It will depend on the circumstances.
This use, use of meeting rooms.
And, and that's, I think that was more my specific question. I, I wasn't really asking about the, the people are coming in to use like the laptop bar or coming in to look at the books or attend a book reading. I was look, I was more looking at the use of some of the rooms that potentially have some more overhead, like the technology piece rooms.
Yeah. Who knows, maybe we'll have some weddings. I, I don't know. I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're not, we're not there yet, but, you know, we'll see.
Phil, um, along the lines of what Commissioner Gondik's talking about, or maybe Sukrit can answer the question. In, in a couple of the spaces, there was, there was tutoring rooms. And I, you know, I've seen people, when I've been in the library, just tutoring on the first floor there, just the tables out in the open. Do, does the library currently have any tutoring rooms? And, you know, can you talk to me, talk to us a little bit about that after school hour? Where we're having 50 to 60 kids from the high school and middle school in terms of what, what area, parts of the libraries they use and what parts of the libraries you envision them using in the future with the new building?
Right. So Kevin, we have given, uh, sometimes we even provide our boardroom to tutors. Uh, we have a small hub, so especially in the like evening times. If, if we see the teens are not using that hub, then we will open that up for, for tutoring purposes. But most of the times you will see tutors teaching kids on open tables around the library, all around the library. So we don't really have enclosed spaces other than like hub and the boardroom on second floor. On first floor, we have nothing which can provide anything private or anything like the tutoring room.
And then in those after-school hours, sort of, if you could just compare where, where the teens and the middle school kids sort of access currently in the existing library and where you envision them accessing during that time period in the design building?
So, so currently teenagers, teens and tweens are on first floor and on second floor. Because like there's, again, there look, no partition. They don't really have a space to call their own. We do open a hub, which is a, a small, a small space, like almost one-half size of a boardroom. But we have way more teens and tweens than who can, who we can accommodate in that room. So they are all around. So because of that, our seniors and adults, they leave the building during that time. We have already seen like around 2:00, we have heard mothers with toddlers saying, all right, all right, guys, time to leave because now school is, is time for school to close and they, all these kids are going to be coming to the building. In the new plan, because we are creating kind of like an entire independent, separate teen library. And also with our architects, like smartly we're doing, creating those like two rooms which are right next to the teen library. If we have overflow, we are willing to then accommodate different groups of teens in two additional meeting rooms along with the teen library. So we are hoping that will resolve the problem. So children library will be for children, first floor will be for like regular patrons and then we'll still have the senior living room area. So we are, we have thought about it, like how many people, how many kids we'll be able to accommodate in this new plan. And looks like, it's, so far it looks like it's a brilliant plan.
I want to talk about the sensory rooms. You know, we have learned over the years, there is a significant issue in Haverford Township and most townships of autistic children. We hear from the schools, we've had consultants come in and so forth. And so this is a way to accommodate what we believe is a need out in, in the community that really hasn't been addressed at the library.
I, I wanted to actually, I was wait, after Commissioner McCloskey was done, I was going to comment on that, that I do want to congratulate you and, and your team in affirmatively, you know, taking into consideration, you know, children with special needs, children with autism in this kind of design. It's something very important across our entire community. And it's definitely something that I really would, you know, I personally would really want to see in any kind of, you know, planning. And I, I congratulate you. I think you guys did a good job in terms of identifying and addressing that concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this stage? We'll, I think, have plenty more opportunities to see more detail and ask any more questions. But thank you all.
Thank you.
For your excellent presentation and for your service to the township. Next on our agenda is our regularly scheduled citizens forum. In this forum, people can call ahead and register to speak on any, any item they'd like. After that is completed, we then invite people to speak on an agenda item. We have a full list of registered speakers tonight. So I would ask that you try your best to confine your comments to approximately three minutes. Hit the trap door at three minutes and one second, but at 4:00 I may start looking at my watch and, and after that may ask you to wrap up. So first on our, um, first on our citizens forum is Eric Hartman. Hartman, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak and thank you for the service with the township. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of about 170 community members that have signed a somewhat unusual petition I've sent to you. It's unusual because it agrees with PennDOT in its sense that there should be a road diet on Haverford Road. It just insists that it's done up to the most excellent standards possible, which we didn't see in the January 19th presentation that PennDOT made to the township. And by the, really just through talking with neighbors and not doing a lot of PR or anything, about 170 people, most of whom live in Commissioner Cavender's and Holmes Ward's, signed on to the petition. It just urges doing a road diet very, very well. The purpose, of course, is to decrease traffic accidents, which we agree with, and to prevent zigzagging. What we wanted to see more of was space for walkers, consciousness of the bus crossing, awareness of the fact that we're a community that uses the high-speed line and many people cross at key intersections. And we're asking the township to be attentive to putting pressure on PennDOT to realize that we're not a drive-through for other people getting to Philadelphia. We're a township, a living, vital residential community with great businesses. And we see in successful road diets, which we've seen on Windwood Road and Lower Marion nearby, or if you want really high volume, the Cobbs Creek Parkway in Philadelphia, examples of people being able to access businesses more easily, being able to cross more safely. Doing this well is an investment in the future. It's what homebuyers are looking for today, young people are looking for today. And it's aligned with many of the township organizations, such as, I think we'll hear similar points from Fens of Haverford Trails and the Environmental Advisory Council. The college also shared a letter with Commissioner Cavender, supporting many of these points about walkability, accessibility. In closing, I just want to thank you again. You know that the population of the township is almost as large as Harrisburg. The population density is similar to Denver, Colorado and Portland, Oregon. We're a place that needs smart design and smart walkability and access to transit. We can do that with cars as well. So that's what the commission, or the petition calls for. And I've shared it with you in your boxes as well. Thanks for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Next is, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, Annie Lepel.
Hi, good evening. My name is Annie Lepel. I'm a resident of the ninth ward and I am a library professional here in Delaware County. I serve as an administrator for our county library system. And in fact, I had the pleasure of starting my career right here at the Haverford Township Free Library as a youth services librarian. And now my husband and I choose to raise our family here. When I began working at the Haverford Library in the early 2000s, as you know, we were already talking about a new building. And it brings me so much joy that we are finally on the cusp of having a library facility that our township deserves. One that is fitting of such a vibrant, diverse and active community. After leaving the Haverford Township Free Library, I served as the executive director at the Radnor Memorial Library, right up the road in Wayne, Delaware County. During my tenure there, I helped to manage the renovation and expansion of that building, a project that is quite similar to what's being proposed here. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about what that meant to the community. The square footage was increased. We brought the building up to and beyond ADA compliance and we replaced all the mechanicals with more efficient models. These updates not only made the library a bigger, brighter, efficient and flexible space, but more importantly, it transformed how the library was used. A truly accessible building meant that we saw more and new patrons. We no longer had middle schoolers sprawled in the aisles because we finally had enough seats for everyone. And in fact, the creation of appropriate spaces for kids and teens meant that everyone could enhance their use of the library. Community partnerships expanded. We saw more engagement across the board. Flexible space made responding to pandemic precautions just a little bit easier. And access to information and entertainment options grew. I'm confident that those benefits will be realized here in Haverford Township as well, just as other communities that have invested in their libraries have seen. As one of the busiest and most beloved institutions in our community, this is what we need now and into the future. I hope that Haverford Township will join with other municipalities in Delco like Radnor, Middletown, Ridley, Media, who have gone all-in on their libraries, creating dynamic spaces that are ready to meet the ever-changing needs of their residents. Let's make sure that our community has the space it needs to collaborate, learn or just hang out. And along the way, we can borrow hotspot, a museum pass and lots and lots of books. I thank you for your support of the full renovation and expansion of the Haverford Township Free Library. I truly can't wait to see the impact this investment will have on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lepel. Nice to see you again. Don Kelly.
Good evening. Can you hear me better if I speak away from the microphone?
The audience may not hear you, the viewing audience.
Thank you. I'm speaking as an individual, not as a representative of any of the organizations that I'm a part of. A decade ago, we faced five challenging real estate-related situations. We had the old state hospital grounds, the vacant bubble gum factory, the vacant quarry, the obsolete municipal building and the aging library. We successfully addressed four of those challenging situations in a truly amazing period of accomplishment. We have the wonderful Haverford Reserve and the Crack Center, the YMCA, the Quarry Shopping Center and this beautiful municipal building. The one challenge, going back more than a decade, going back almost 20 years at least, of those five challenges, and the most elusive one has been the library. And the issue, like I said, goes back more than 20 years, I think. There's been no obvious solution. I was among those advocating to keep the library in its present location because of its centrality to the community. Because the modern library at its best is a community building institution. It's more than books. It's a center for education and cultural events, civic gatherings and a venue for fellow citizens just to be with other people. Now we have a specific opportunity to address this issue like we did so successfully with the other four institutions 10 years ago. So let's not let the vision of the perfect be an impediment to an actual attainment of the good. This is a good plan. It's time to bring this beloved institution up to the level of the other anchor institutions in our community and the neighboring communities. And in doing so, we will ensure the exceptional reputation that Haverford Township has attained in recent years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Nice to see you again as well. Ms. Plattfoot, Joyce Plattfoot.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Joyce Plattfoot. I'm from the Merwood Park area of the township. And I'm here tonight to voice my enthusiasm for library renovations. Three main reasons. Number one, the library has had a positive impact in our community. As a former employee of 11 years at the library, I worked with Annie and I have seen the positive impact the library has had, both in the personal lives of my neighbors and in the communal life of our township. From developing a love of reading in the young to making new connections and learning new skills in retirement, to being a place to access necessary resources. The library is a trusted institution in our township and plays a valuable role in expanding the educational ecosystem. Number two, a beautiful space inspires pride. Just like this building and the crack and even the park pavilions. I have since worked at Leddington Library in Lower Marion and I'm currently the director at Radnor Memorial Library where Annie previously worked. And both of these townships have invested in their libraries within the last 10 years. And their building renovations are a source of pride by their residents. Not only are the facilities much more efficient, but they are also beautiful and well-planned spaces where people want to work and study and meet. And finally, I believe that the library's plans are innovative and really exciting, honestly. The building itself engenders the library's vision to be a dynamic community hub for lifelong learning and creativity. Spaces for things like the maker space, the small stud, the small study rooms, the sensory rooms. Those are really creative and cutting-edge ways to address community needs and they're really pioneering in the library world. So they're very exciting for our community. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say that I support library renovations in our community and thank you for supporting them as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Plattfoot. Tom East.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Such an echo back there. Do you know that? It's very distracting. Hello. Anyway, my name is Tom East. I live on Milber, uh, uh, excuse me. I live on Milbrook Lane in Haverford on the fifth ward. And I'm here to support the decision to allow parking on Pamyard Road next to the Haverford School, which in the past has been no parking. I've written a little thing I'd like to read. It'll just take a minute. And you have a, each have a copy, I think, that I delivered earlier. I applaud and support the planned changes that allow the parking on Pamyard Road. This action will allow more convenient parking next to the Haverford School, relieving student parking on Railroad Avenue at Buck Lane and north of, on Milbrook Lane. This action will likely stop the illegal two-hour limit parking on Buck Lane by the Haverford football field, which is not being enforced now anyway. The affected portion of Pamyard Road is only 19 feet wide. Therefore, the west side parking will need to be stopped. And looking at the ordinance, it wasn't clear that that would happen. In looking at the ordinance, it wasn't clear that that would happen. Given the upcoming situation, I believe it would be advised to make Panmure Road one-way. This two-way traffic would be almost impossible because of the parallel parking of the east side vehicles. That one-way requirement would end at Buck Lane. Lastly, the ordinance needs the correction to indicate that Panmure Road ends at Railroad Avenue, which does not become College Avenue until Railroad forks west past Oakley Road. You know, it got its name from the railroad that was there, that was removed. And as the story goes, the train stopped there to refill for water because they were driven with steam. And Abraham Lincoln made at least two stops there and walked across the Iron Bridge, which is still present on Railroad Avenue. Thanks. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. East. I appreciate your words and your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our list is Liz Goldberg.
Hi, good evening. My name is Liz Goldberg, and I'm a resident of the 6th Ward. Very exciting to see all the library stuff, and congratulations to Sergeant Kenny, and thank him. I am here actually to speak tonight in support of a resolution that you will vote on later in the agenda for Black History Month. And I would just like to thank the Board for proposing the resolution and for taking it up, and to just express my hope that it is passed unanimously. My real hope is that one day, Black History Month will be unnecessary, and the way that we study, understand, and teach our nation's story will evolve to become a truly integrated story. Since Black History is so central to American history, I have to believe that eventually we will look back on the celebration of Black History Month as an outdated but necessary bridge Americans had to cross to arrive at a more accurate depiction of our national story. But we are not there yet. Indeed, this year, Black History Month is particularly important because there are powerful interest groups and politicians who are working hard to prevent us from teaching the story of non-white Americans. And in that context, Black History Month is not a polite exercise, and it's not a paying of lip service. Right now, Black History Month is a necessary response to those who would deny the truth about white racism, as well as deny the inspiring story of black strength, resilience, and creativity. Fittingly, the theme of Black History Month this year is resistance. And we resist by learning about and teaching about the incredible contributions of black folks throughout this nation's history, from Harriet Tubman and Frederick Douglass, to Shirley Chisholm and John Lewis, and from Octavia Butler to Beyoncé. But along with celebrating those names we know so well, we resist by learning the names and stories of black folks whose accomplishments have very nearly been lost. I've been reading a book with my nine-year-old son about the 100 best baseball players of all time. And the author lists at number five, just above number six, Ted Williams, a man named Oscar Charleston. He was born in 1896, a year and a half after Babe Ruth. They both threw and hit left-handed. They both began as pitchers. They both left home at a very young age. But by all accounts, Charlie, as he was known, was a five-tool player. He could hit for power, he hit for average, he played a beautiful centerfield, he had blinding speed on the bases. The biggest difference between him and Ruth, other than the base stealing, was that Charlie was black, and he wasn't allowed to play in the big leagues, and most of his statistics went unrecorded. For that reason, the author concedes we can never really know if Oscar Charleston deserves to be number five. Frankly, he might very well deserve to be number one. My son is obsessed with baseball and a math kid, and he already knows that a whole narrative exists in every box score. And he was deeply frustrated by this part of the book. Mom, if he was so good, how can we not know his stats? And I said, well, we can never know the full measure of Oscar Charleston's greatness, and we can never really know the complete story of our own national pastime for the simple reason that racism and white supremacy were designed to erase them. And that is why Black History Month is so important, and it is a way that we can together resist those forces who would deny the past and truly build a more honest and complete understanding of our own shared history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. Finally, Jamie Hawthorne.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Hawthorne, and I live in the Merwood Park section of Haverford Township. I am also a board member for the Friends of the Haverford Township Free Library, and I am here to speak in support of the upcoming renovations. My husband and I were both born here and raised in Haverford Township. We did move out to California for four years and lived in the Bay Area. But when it was time to move back east, we decided that we wanted to move back to our hometown. There were many compelling reasons to buy here. There has been great progress in this town since our youth, and we aren't the only ones to notice. In 2022, Haver Town was the most popular real estate market in the Northeast, according to Zillow. So much so that our elementary schools are bursting at the seams. Lynwood has a beautiful new building, and the high school has been renovated as well. The families that have moved to Haver Town for our beautiful homes and award-winning school district deserve to have a new library sooner rather than later. Some of the things that have not changed about the Haverford Township Library in my 41 years here: the beloved ramp out front, which children love to walk and race down; the welcoming smell of books that beckons you as the front doors open; the young children enjoying storytimes and summer reading programs, as well as older children gathering safely after school dismisses. And some things that have changed: we now have an HVAC system that often malfunctions, water-damaged facilities that are unsightly, and a parking situation that has become untenable. Not to mention a front facade that was recently crashed into by a car. The longer we wait to renovate, the worse these problems become. Many families in the township utilize Luddington and Ardmore Libraries instead of our own facility due to what's lacking. The time has come to act. I urge you, the Board of Commissioners, to move forward with these renovations quickly so that the people of Haverford Township can access a 21st century library that will be on par with the other new buildings in our community and also comparable to the libraries in neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawthorne. We now move to the Citizens Forum for Agenda Items. Just to remind folks, there is an opportunity later in the meeting for people who would like to get up and speak on an item that is not before us tonight. But as far as comments on Agenda Items, I will start, as I always do, on the left. If I could, is there anybody in the front row who would like to speak? Is there anybody in the second row? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Richard Kerr. I live in the Cooper Town section of Haverford, and I'm co-chair of the Friends of Haverford Trails. We're very happy to see the board item tonight to award a construction contract for the extension of the Pennsy Trail south into Lanark. This is a major project and a major advance in mobility in the township. We support it fully and thank the Commissioners and Township staff for their ongoing work in making this a reality. We also want to encourage the Haverford Township Commissioners to throw the weight of their voices in support of the PennDOT reconfiguration, the so-called road diet of Haverford Road. The plan presented in PennDOT's January 19 public session is a major step forward on safety, but it falls short of being a consistent and complete safety improvement along the entire Haverford Road corridor. As our elected leaders, we ask you to require from PennDOT a continuous single-traffic lane in each direction, which would eliminate the safety dangers of speeding, weaving, and merging traffic. In PennDOT's meeting, their project manager admitted not being familiar with the adaptive and coordinated traffic signal system that they recently installed along Westchester Pike. He also stated he was unfamiliar with the nearby just-completed road diet on Winwood Road and Lower Marion. That successful road configuration is consistent and complete along its entire length. We need to demand a solution that is the equal to that one and offers the greatest safety and connectivity possible. Haverford should accept no less from PennDOT than what it provided to our neighbors in Lower Marion. Your input as Commissioners will carry the greatest weight. The Friends of Haverford Trails have previously mailed to each of you a copy of our comments submitted to PennDOT. We would be happy to provide additional copies and answer any questions that you may have on this project. Thank you for your continuing work in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. And I appreciate how you snuck in an Agenda Item there at the start, so thank you. The next row, and the row behind that. And the second and last row, yes? Yes.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Monet Riley, and I'm a resident of the 9th Ward. I come tonight to talk to you about the Black History Month Resolution, which is very exciting. I am a Chair of the BIPOC Parent Group of Haverford Township, that stands for Black Indigenous Persons of Color. We have been around since 2020. We started with a chunker treat that we did in conjunction with the Haverford Police Department. Both Deputy Hagan and Chief Ayala were instrumental in making that happen. Also, in 2021 as well, we held a chunker treat. Last year, we held a cultural festival in Haverford College in the fall. And next Saturday, on the 25th, we are having a Black History Month event at the Recreation Center that we wanted to make sure everyone knew they were invited to. We're going to have black authors come, who are local-ish authors of children's books, and they're going to come read to the children at the Recreation Center, and then we're also going to have a craft. So we are hoping that in celebrating Black History Month, obviously, that all of you approve the resolution that is put up for tonight. Thank you so much for drafting it and that you all can stop by at some point. It's from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. next Saturday. I also wanted to say, as a resident of Ward 9, thank you for using the ARPA money for the fence for Hilltop. I spoke to some Hilltop parents this week. My children do not play baseball, but their classmates do. So we know some of their parents and are very excited about getting that fence fixed and using the money for our work. So as you heard about the library, it's a point of pride when we get new things installed, and we see you know the beautification of our township, so thank you.
Thank you. And finally, anyone in the back on the left? So here in the front row, and in the second row? Anybody in the third row, anything to say? The fourth row? And finally, the last row in the back? Well, thank you all for your comments. I will... I think the comments at the library don't need any response other than thank you all for your very thoughtful comments. And thank you for the advocacy and information on the Panmure Road parking situation. Also, the support for and encouragement of the Black History Month Resolution. Finally, with regard to the road diet, I do want to assure everybody in the township that we, as a board, will schedule and invite public comment on the road diet and then distill those opinions and share them with PennDOT. All of us on this board, as all residents of Haverford Township, will be affected by that plan. Two of us on this board, that plan goes to, you know, passes directly through our wards. And so it is of great concern to all of us. And so for that reason, I want to assure everybody that it will not go unaddressed by the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township. With that, we will move on in the agenda to... To the Bureau of Fire.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a partial report from the Bureau of Fire. In the month of January, the fire department responded to 42 emergency calls. 31 of those calls were in our township. 11 were in other municipalities responding to requests for mutual aid by their fire departments. And one company's reported 46 hours of training by at least the one company. So that's the report for January.
Thank you. Our president had to step away for a moment, so I'd like to invite the Township Auditor to provide his update.
Thank you first to Phil Goldsmith and Susan Skrip for coming up and doing the presentation at the library. It sounds very exciting to what they have to say. Also, I want to say congratulations to Sergeant Kenny on his promotion. But unfortunately, I also want to point out, sorry to all the Eagles fans about last night. I too was looking forward to trying to climb up some grease poles afterwards, but it wasn't to be. It's only when we are the underdogs. But no, it could be worse. We could be Cowboys fans. So... But anyway, for this meeting, I have reviewed the expenditures and warrants, and I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Any of my colleagues have any questions? Very good. Moving forward, Mr. Berman, can you please provide your Township Manager update?
Yes, I have three issues. First, the Environmental Protection Agency has announced that an engineering evaluation and cost analysis regarding the Superfund site on Eagle Road is available for public review and comment. And we're going to post some links on our website tomorrow so that folks can review the documentation. The document proposes a new permanent groundwater treatment plant at the site, which will replace the temporary groundwater treatment system that's currently operating there. EPA will host an in-person public availability session on February 23 from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. right here in this room. And so we'll put additional information out as soon as we have it. Second item, a COVID booster clinic will take place also right here in this room tomorrow, February 14th, Happy Valentine's Day, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Both Moderna and Pfizer will be available. Reservations are highly recommended. You can either visit the Health Department's website, that's the Delaware County Health Department website, or call 484-276-2100 to make your reservation. Finally, I'm excited to report that in the coming days, we will launch Haverford Township Citizen Reporter. This is going to be the online system that we talked about middle of last year. It's going to allow the community to request services and report issues online. You can do it from your handheld device or your computer. The system has a map. You can locate the issue on the map. You can upload photos, and it will be received by the township and sent via email to the appropriate department for attention. Want to be clear that this is not intended to replace any emergency calls, for example, sewer backup, or concerns about hazardous spills, or traffic lights that may be out, street signs that may be down, stop signs. You should really call the township during regular business hours to report those, or dial 911 after hours or on weekends. But we're very excited to roll this new Citizen Reporter out, and that should be in the coming days. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Township Manager. The next item for our consideration is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th, 2023.
Yes, I'd like to approve the meeting minutes of Jan... Or January 9th, 2023?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additions, deletions, corrections, observations? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsti Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Our next item for consideration is our approval of warrants.
Mr. President, motion to approve the following warrant, number 2, 2023, General and sewer fund payroll for January 9th. General and sewer fund payroll for January 19th, 2023, in the amount of $776,916.25. General and sewer fund payroll for February 2nd, 2023, in the amount of $685,088.92. General fund disbursements, number 2, 2023, in the amount of $1,422,178.15. Sewer fund disbursements, number 2, 2023, in the amount of $141,634.47. Community Development Block Grant Fund Disbursement, number 2, 2023, in the amount of $146,599.75. Capital Projects Funds Disbursement, number 2, 2023, in the amount of $182,635.10. American Rescue Plan Fund Disbursement, number 2, 2023, in the amount of $189,513.83. Credit card statement ending January 27th, 2023, in the amount of $12,606.99.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Next motion is to consider ordinance number P-1, 2023?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-1, 2023, establishing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Special purpose parking in front of 2726 Morris Road, Ardmore, Pennsylvania. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Berman, please.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
For our next consideration, ordinance number P-2 of 2023?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-2, 2023, establishing rescinding traffic restrictions on the following highway. Repealing of the no parking at any time restrictions on the east side of Panmure Road from College Avenue to Buck Lane covered, which was added on 12/27/1989 by ordinance number 2065, amended 2/12/1990 by ordinance number 2076.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any comments or questions?
I had a question for Chief Viola regarding Mr. East's letter. He asked about one-way, and I wanted to see if you could comment on that.
Yes, Commissioner, we have agreed to take a look at that. Once this parking is enacted, we get the signs down. We feel at this point, two-way traffic is doable, but we won't be able to tell until the signs are down. But keep in mind that over the years, we have granted the school parking on that side. We're removing the signs for special occasions, and the whole street has been filled up, and we haven't had any problems. But we will reevaluate it and look at it on a continual basis and report back next month.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Our next item is ordinance number P-3 of 2023?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-3, 2023, authorizing renewal lease agreement with Hockey Town 19083 LLC, Havertown, PA, for a portion of certain property located at 1018 Darby Road, the scadium, Havertown, PA, subject to review by the Township Solicitor and further subject to the approval of the Township Manager of the final document.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
We now move to resolutions on our agenda. First resolution for us to consider, number 2297 of 2023?
Motion to adopt resolution number 2297, 2023, authorizing the transfer of 2022 funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Next resolution for our consideration is Resolution 2299 of 2022?
Motion to appoint Johnny Montgomery Scott.
Correct. Excuse me, I believe the agenda is incorrect, and I misstated that. I assume this is Resolution 2299 of 2023?
That is correct.
Okay, so note that the agenda has it wrong, but the resolution for consideration is 2023. McCluskey, sorry.
Okay. Motion to appoint Johnny Montgomery Scott as the Township of Haverford's underwriters for the 2023 bond issue, and authorize the Township Manager and Assistant Township Manager to take any other actions preliminary to the issuance of the series of 2023 bonds and in contemplation thereof.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Just for the public's understanding, there was a presentation during our work session last week where we received a series of bids regarding interest rates, and as presented, Johnny Montgomery Scott was the lowest responsible bid that was presented to us.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. And as I understand, Commissioner McCluskey, we will also, we will still have before us another bond resolution when it comes time to actually...
Yeah, this is not the vote for the issuance of the bond. This is just a selection of the underwriter who will work with Amy Cuthbertson, our Assistant Township Manager, to do the necessary work to lead us up to the issuance of the series 2023 bonds.
Thank you for that information. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Next resolution for consideration is Resolution 2300 of 2023?
Mr. President, I would like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2300, 2023, recognizing and celebrating the month of February as Black History Month.
Second.
And do I have permission to read the resolution into the record?
So, granted.
Okay. A resolution of Haverford Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, recognizing and celebrating the month of February as Black History Month, whereas the contributions of African-American citizens, scientists, inventors, farmers, educators, homemakers, explorers, and public servants, including President and Vice President of the United States, in addition to countless other professions, have greatly benefited our nation. And, whereas, Dr. Carter G. Woodson first initiated the recognition of African-Americans during the month of February in 1926, when Dr. Woodson set aside a special period in February to recognize the heritage and achievement of African-Americans of the United States. And, whereas, Black History Month was officially recognized in the United States in 1976 as part of the bicentennial celebration when President Gerald Ford urged Americans to honor the, quote, "too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history," end of quote. And, whereas, since 1976, Black History Month has continued to be a month-long celebration of African-American history and accomplishments in the United States. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Township of Haverford, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, does hereby recognize the contributions of the African-American community to our township, our Commonwealth, and our nation, and encourage all citizens to increase their awareness and understanding of these contributions, resolved this 13th day of February, 2023.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie Grubb. Any questions or comments? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
For our next consideration, Resolution Number 2301-2023?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2301, 2023, that the Board of Commissioners desires to make improvements and financial investments in several township projects and initiatives in accordance with the allowable spending structure as described by the U.S. Department of Treasury's final rule as follows. One Old Dominion Brush Company model DCL 800 SM Extreme VAC Leaf and Debris Collection Unit at a cost not to exceed $241,167.38 under CoStar's contract number 4400020075. Initial supply of 50 Welcome to Haverford Township Shop Small, Shop Local banners at a cost not to exceed $5,096.32. Purchase, installation, training, and maintenance for Tracer Asset Management software at a cost not to exceed $125,000. And, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of funds from the Township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the above-referenced projects and initiatives.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the ARPA Purchase Authorizations Resolution?
I do have just one question.
Yes, Commissioner.
The Welcome to Haverford Township banners, the, is this, and this might be a question from Ms. Cuthbertson, is this the proposed banner program for the Eagle Road corridor?
Yes, that is the plan right now. The initial supply would go along the Eagle Road corridor from around Swiss Farm up to the intersection with Darby.
Okay. No questions, just wanted to make sure I had the right program.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
We move to contract awards. First contract for consideration relates to the Township building.
Mr. President, make a motion to award a professional services contract to Wiss, Janney, Elsner Associates in the amount of $23,875 to prepare construction documents and administer the bid and construction processes for installation of a new stone veneer on the Township building, with additional site inspections to be performed on a time and materials basis.
Second.
Second. Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this?
Mr. President, this was discussed at a Township Property meeting, and at the recommendation of the Township Manager, this firm for professional services was selected to administer this
Anything else? Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Next contract for consideration relates to the scadium.
Mr. President, I motion to award a cooling towers replacement contract to McCluskey Mechanical Contractors, Blackwood, New Jersey, in the amount of $326,400, submitting the lowest responsible bid, and to award an electrical contract for the cooling towers replacement to Shipsey Electric, Malvern, PA, in the amount of $17,603, again submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
You better get that name right.
Just to say it, just to say it out loud, I have no idea or no familial connection to anybody associated with that company.
Kevin, I was going to ask, but you beat me to it. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions or comments from my colleagues about these two contracts?
I would just comment to let the public know, those in the room and those watching, that the cooling tower replacement was actually one of the bigger projects identified in the electricity use study that we just had presented to us recently as a way of, obviously, not only improving the operational efficiencies of the scadium, but also reducing our overall electric consumption and hence utility bills.
Thank you. I like you for that information. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
For our next consideration is a contract relating to parks and recreation?
Mr. President, motion to accept the bid of Richard E. Pearson Construction Company of Swedesboro, New Jersey, having the lowest responsible bid, as reported by Pendott, and to commit $395,000 of township funds to the construction phase of the project.
Any questions or comments?
Know that Sherry and me are thrilled to see the start, right?
Yes, indeed.
After a long wait.
Yep.
I think that goes for a number of us, Commissioner Quinn and Commissioner Forstie Grubb, but thank you for that comment. Any other questions or comments from anybody? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
The next category of items on our agenda is purchases. We have a department, Police Department purchase for consideration.
Mr. President, make a motion to award the purchase of four 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles, CK 10706, in the amount of $213,000, and two 2023 Chevrolet Bolt EUV electric vehicles, in the amount of $60,400, from Whitmar Auto Group, 1001 East Main Street, Mountjoy, Pennsylvania, under CoStar's contract number 13-111.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
The request of our Chief of Police. In the past, I understand that we have purchased some hybrid vehicles for our police fleet, and now we're reverting back to the Chevrolet Tahoe. Can you tell me about the decision-making that occurred?
Glad to, yes. The, well, we bought the hybrid vehicles to two Ford Explorers. We're using them through a test phase. What we have found, the size of those vehicles does not allow us to carry the equipment that we have in our police corps, which continues to grow. Hybrids are still in the early stages for police vehicles, and police departments are not fully committed to them yet because of learning about the use of them and how long they're going to last. Our major concern is what happens as they start breaking down, which police corps take a lot of abuse, obviously, and what we have found with public works, that they have to go back to the dealer because of the intricacies of the electric and the fuel.[1795.32] to the dealer, uh, because of the intricacies of the electric and the, uh, the fuel. So our mechanics are not certified to repair them, so when it goes back to the dealer, the Ford dealer, it's down for a considerable amount of time. So we're still evaluating them. The jewelry's still out on them. Uh, we, we are, have an open book, and we always consider, as we move forward. Hopefully, we're hoping that Chevrolet comes out with a hybrid vehicle, or somebody comes out with a hybrid vehicle that's bigger, uh, that we can carry our equipment.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, I trust that police departments all over the country are a large enough market that the manufacturers are paying attention to the police department's needs, and, I mean, are you finding that they are making progress, and you are optimistic that they will eventually meet the needs of the police departments in an electronic, uh, version of a automobile?
Yeah, yeah, I, I absolutely do. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, a large part of, uh, fleet purchases, uh, throughout the country. The problem is, uh, what we have found with all manufacturers, uh, the difficulty of getting vehicles, and the, uh, dealers have a window, one or two days to order vehicles the year before. In years past, we could order vehicles, and they would just send the order in. Now, when I speak to the dealers, they have to be prepared a year ahead of time and put their order. This dealer we deal with now, he orders 800 cars in one day, uh, with the expectation he's going to sell them, whether it be Ford, or Chevy, or Chrysler, and that's what we're facing. So, uh, the decision has to be made in, in July the previous year to figure what we want to do for the following year. But yes, things are moving forward with them, uh, but technology being what it is, it's still, still in the early stages for, for police vehicles, fleet vehicles.
Thank you. Any other questions for, uh, our chief? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Now, we, um, have before us the consideration of the purchase of a number of vehicles.
Mr. President, I'll handle the Public Works. Uh, motion to authorize the purchase of the following vehicles. Our Public Works Department, Sanitation Division. One 2023 HV 607 International Cab and Chassis Sanitation slash Recycle Truck, Hunter International 2320 High Hill Road, Logan Township, New Jersey, under CoStar's number, Contract 25-102, in the amount of $119,875. Also, one Leach 21 Yard 2R3 Trash Recycling Body for the chassis listed above, from Grand Turk International Equipment Company Incorporated, one Schuylkill Parkway, Bridgeport, Pennsylvania, under CoStar's Contract 025E22-417, in the amount of $100,077. For the Sewer Division, one Main Line System Ford Transit TR 350 Van, Track Star Camera and Inspection Truck, from HA DeHart &amp; Son 311 Crown Point Road, Thoroughford, New Jersey, under CoStar's Contract 025-52, in the amount of $196,399.76. For the Highway Department, one 2023 Ford F-550 Cab and Chassis for Dump Truck, from Hondrew Ford 300 South Main Street, Mannheim, Pennsylvania, under CoStar's Contract 25-E22-387, in the amount of $56,210. Also, for the Highway Department, one Dynapro nine-foot stainless steel dump body with buyer's tailgate salt spreader and nine-foot Western Pro Plus Plow, from DeJana Truck and Utility Equipment, 490 Pulaski Road, Kings Park, New York, under CoStar's Contract 025-E22-548, in the amount of $41,120. Also, one 2023 Ford Super Duty F-350 with nine-foot Western Pro Plus Plow, from Hondrew Ford 300 South Main Street, Mannheim, Pennsylvania, under CoStar's Contract 025-E22-387, in the amount of $61,255. One Blast Pod Sand Blaster Model DB 800, from Duffless Blasting 5711 Shermyer Road, Houston, Texas, in the amount of $15,500. One 11,000-pound Vehicle Lift Triple R Truck Parts, 1915 Chester Pike, Eddie Stone, Pennsylvania, under CoStar's Contract 008-297, in the amount of $12,370. One Old Dominion Brush Company Model DCL 800 SM Extreme Vac Leaf and Debris Collection Unit, from Stevenson Equipment Incorporated, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $241,167.38, under CoStar's Contract 4400020075.
Second. Uh, we have a motion and a second for the purchase of Public Works, uh, sorry, we have a motion and a second for, uh, the purchase of Public Works vehicles. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Question, the, the, the brush truck, belief, that was also, is it the same description of the, uh, ARPA funds?
That is, that is a duplicate. That should be removed.
Okay, so, uh, then my...
The resolution was the authorization to use ARPA funds for it. The brush collection truck?
Is the purchase?
Is, no?
Are correct. The ARPA resolution, we have been in the past using that as the authorization to purchase as well.
Okay. So it is a duplicate.
I'll amend the motion to remove that last unit, the Old Dominion Brush Company truck, as it was previously covered under the ARPA funds. If you'd accept it, Mr.?
I accept it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have, uh, uh, for our consideration, an amendment to the motion to authorize the purchase of vehicles, approved by the mover and approved by the seconder. Uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes, as amended.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes, as amended.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes, as amended.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Uh, do park maintenance, um...
May I breathe there? Thanks.
One 2023 Fu, Ford Super Duty F-350 Regular Cab with eight-foot bed and nine-foot Western Pro Plus Snow Plow, Hondrew Ford 300 South Main Street, Mannheim, Pennsylvania. It's CoStar's Number 025-E22-387, in the amount of $58,810. And one 2023 Ford Super Duty F-350 Crew Cab with eight-foot bed through, uh, from Hondrew Ford 300 South Main Street, Mannheim, Pennsylvania. It's CoStar's Number 025-E22-387, in the amount of $55,535.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any, uh, questions or comments on these purchase? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. President, for EMS Division, one 2023 Ford Super Duty F-550 Cab and Chassis for ambulance outfit, from Hondrew Ford 300 South Main Street, Mannheim, under CoStar's Contract 25-E22-387, in the amount of $56,300. And the refurbishment and remount of the ambulance body and controls for outfit on the chassis listed above, from P-Fund Superior Sales Company Incorporated, also known as Lifeline Emergency Vehicles, 221 Chester Drive, Lower Borough, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $128,410.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions, uh, or comments from my colleagues about the purchases of vehicles for the EMS Department? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, um, motion to authorize the purchase of fence repairs on the baseball field at Hilltop Park, Super Fence Company, Ardmore, PA, in the amount of $13,700, under CoStar's Contract, uh, 000552947. Purchase will be with ARPA money.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of 20 32-gallon trash receptacles for parks and trails, from General Recreation Incorporated, Newtown Square, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $15,560, under CoStar's Contract PA 014-071. Funding for this purchase will be with ARPA money.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this purchase?
Question, what, how, what do these things look like? They're $778 apiece, though. With the... Okay. Okay. Okay.
Are, are these for new locations for trash cans, or are these replacing, is...
And they don't get moved to the parties in the woods by the kids anymore?
Actually, I do have another question. Are the, so these are all trash cans? Are, none of these are recycling cans? Do we currently offer any kind of recycling cans in our parks?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, the next item on our agenda is appointments. Um, I will entertain a motion to, uh, remove this from the agenda, as we are still, um, uh, requesting, uh, resumes for consideration to this board for these positions.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, and remove number 19 off the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. It's removed from the agenda. Twenty. Uh, we're now at the continuation of Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. Any member of the public who is here now, who would like to address the board on any issue, they, uh, are invited to do so. Uh, anyone on the left? Um, yes.
I live on Fairfield Road. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I spoke up here before about safety in this town, and, um, I would like to speak about that again. Um, I still have a deep concern with the safety issue in this town. The, um, teen gang issue, for lack of a better term, is not over. I don't want anyone to think that it is. It's a very personal issue for me, and if anyone would like to speak further about it, you can contact me. I'd be happy to talk about it. It's too upsetting to talk about up here, but, trust me, the kids are still out and about, beating up kids and threatening kids in this town. I beg the board, I know that the library seems to be the big buzz, but I still would love you to just please keep safety on the forefront of your minds. And one of the main sources of this crime in this town comes from the YMCA. The straw that broke the camel's back, at least for me, was the shooting on Eagle Road. I, along with many other residents, strongly believe that the policies of the Y have contributed immensely to the rising crime rates. They exhaust our police resources, they use up our tax dollars, and they contribute to traffic, et cetera. Because of that, I filed a right to know with the police to see how many times the police had responded to the Y in the last five years, and it, just in the last five years, and that came out to be over 480 times. 480 incidences. If this were any other business, it would have been labeled a nuisance, it would have been shut down. Obviously, it's not serving just the residents of Haver Town, but ever since it's, um, set up shop here, crime rates have gone up, the pinnacle event of being a shooting directly related to a basketball game at the YMCA. By the grace of God, no one was shot or killed on Eagle Road. It's not like it was the Pike, it was Eagle Road, by the brick and brew, people's apartments, Wawa, where all of our kids hang out, small businesses. Does someone have to get hurt, or seriously maimed, for anybody to wake up? If this were a playground, we would have asked that the basketball nets be removed for at least a good amount of time for everything to calm down. I think it's time to reevaluate the way this place does business. The Y oversells their memberships, they let anyone and everyone in to pick over the locker rooms, steal from the workout rooms, you name it, and as we all know, we get zero tax dollars from this place. In the reports of the 480 times the police responded to the Y, here's a summary of the various incidents that occurred over the past five years. Hundreds of thefts, harassments, disturbances, assaults, offenses against families and children, narcotics possessions, criminal mischief, suspicious persons, and most upsetting, several sex offenses. In the police blotter over the last several months since the fall of 2022, and this is just at the YMCA, this is what reported to have occurred. Assault charges, theft of an iPhone, car keys, $160, two credit cards were stolen from a car, a window was smashed in the parking lot, and a wallet containing $200 in cash was stolen. Another theft by forced entry with $800 in cash stolen, simple assault and harassment. That was just January through July. I could not access August to December. It was suggested the last time I spoke that this was Haver Town residents committing the crimes of the 480 incidents I went over. There were, I was able to access the arrest records of people that the police were able to catch. Um, not one of them was from Haver Town. It was Norristown, Fort Lauderdale, Philadelphia, Clifton Heights, Darby, Baltimore, and Silver Spring, Maryland. So no, Haver Town is not eating its own. The last major publicized arrest was in 2019, when four individuals from Baltimore entered the YMCA, used bolt cutters, opened up the lockers in the men's and women's rooms, stole wallets containing cash and credit cards, went to the CVS on Eagle Road, and bought over two grand in gift cards. These people were from Baltimore, as I mentioned. Um, anyone can access the YMCA. I believe it's nationwide. So anyone can come into our Haver Town YMCA, and it doesn't matter, um, and they can just steal from, from the members. Um, again, last time I expressed concern about crime in Haverford, it was suggested that we be more welcoming. The Y has the most welcoming policy, and look where it's gotten them. It has over, I believe, 20,000 members. Um, again, it gives us zero, um, in tax money, brings in crime, unsavory characters to use our citizens as their personal shopping sprees. I think we, we need to look out for Haverford Township. It's in our town, um, and I respectfully ask you again to be laser-focused on safety. If we don't have a safe town, we don't have a town. No one's gonna want to live here. And I'm up here because I love this town. I'm not one of those people that says, "Oh, I hate Haver." I love this town, and that's why I'm up here. I promise you that if you engage with your people, we will help you be innovative on how to come up with ideas of how to make this town safer. Please look into how to reel the Y in. I'm not asking you to get rid of it, obviously, but maybe look into how to reel the Y in, just like you would any other business that has this level of crime. You wouldn't put up with it if it was another, another business. You would say, "480 times we've been there?" No. Help make your citizens feel secure and get this town back to what it used to be, safe and quiet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Um, anybody else? Uh, yes?
Hi, my name is Joy Baxter, and I live in the Fourth Ward. Um, I want to thank you for your continued commitment to reducing our township's negative impact on our local environment and climate. Three items stand out of late. Um, one, I want to highlight, um, uh, creation of a new job and Haverford Township, um, that it is open now for Special Projects Coordinator, it, who will, among other things, um, work to enact climate, climate action plan solutions, uh, that will save the township money. Also, the Township Energy Audit, which you heard at the work... Also, the township energy audit, which you heard at the work session. This was all great, but now we have work to do. So I just, hopefully this person could, can help with that, but I encourage you all to really enact those things. And also listening to, the commitment to listening to constituent recommendations for improving the scope of the Haverford Road Diet. And now, I just have some good news for you, that Haverford Township has been awarded the USDA Composting and Food Waste Reduction Cooperative Agreement, and it's a two-year grant, a little bit under eighty-nine thousand dollars. We are one of forty-five municipalities and school districts in the country. The funds will directly help increase composting in Haverford Township through five different programs, and also enable us to hire a consultant to determine the logistics and cost of providing curbside food waste pickup, including a trash service, such as what Media Borough does. The five programs that will directly help increase composting is funding our, our current backyard composting program, providing residential incentives to current composting, with current composting companies, providing composting service to staff at the township buildings, providing composting service at township festivals, and expanded pumpkin collection to divert our pumpkins to feed animals. Our, the latest trash audit of this area, which I know you guys are really in tune to, about twenty-five percent of our trash is compostable in this area, and currently is twenty-five percent less to dispose of our waste compost than to send it to the incinerator. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Does anybody else have any other comments tonight? Yes, please.
My name's Lou Ventura, I live in the paddock farm section of Haver Town. What I just wanted to bring up is something that we've been trying to petition or bring up to everyone, or mainly the parks, is about restoring or rebuilding the hockey courts at paddock. There's an empty slab there that used to have a hockey rink that we're just trying to see what we can do about rebuilding it. We've been in communication with Judy and Brian over about a year, and really appreciate their assistance, so we want to bring it up here as well. Just as a brief history, the court's been, there was something there through the seventies, through the nineties, a rudimentary rink. That was, it was great. I grew up playing that, as well as other people I'm working with to do this. And we understand that in the early two thousands, a huge elaborate rink was built, and it was taken down within six months. Understandably, what, it was taken down because it caused a lot of noise, there's a lot of problems, and they didn't go through the process of this, talking to everybody and seeing what should be done. Thing I want to talk about, the benefits of this is, like I said, I lived in, I grew up, very fond memories of the court, is why I targeted paddock farms when I moved back to the area. The park is a great place to tell, you know, grab our eight-year-old, eighteen-year-old to go grab a stick and go play. There's a place to play, it's right there. The park right now is very much geared towards a lot of younger kids or the pickleballers, not much in that middle range of kids, so we're just looking for something else there. I mean, the kids every now and then do come down with a kickball, and of course, ten minutes there's a huge game. It's just, it's a great park, a great community, it's just something that would really add to that. Sorry. Anyway, that surface could also be great to other sports like soccer, dodgeball, summer camp activities, learning to ride a bike, scooter, or whatever, just by repaving it, putting up a couple nets, keeping them out, keeping kids out of the street, or the tennis courts, by learning those kinds of things in a tennis court could really scuff it up, cost a lot more than this whole project altogether. And so this is just that kind of thing. The neighborhood, again, if you look around, you walk the perimeter, kids playing hockey in their driveways, in the streets, in the cul-de-sac, we're all over the place there. It's a, it's a good hockey neighborhood, it's just a great place for something like that. Just to let you know, the objections we have heard of something like this is, has to go back to the, that rink in the early two thousands. In order to find those objections, what we did, we went, we had a petition where we had about four hundred and ninety-one people, well, not about four hundred and ninety-one people, sign this in support. We've talked with Judy, we've talked with Brian, we've gone door to door, we've worked with our civic association, what we found, the major objections were the potential of too much noise, the parking. And what I would say is, the noise, one of the biggest problems is going to be, you know, boards from a nice huge rink. We're saying, no boards, just have a fence, and a paved thing, and make it very rudimentary. Also, parking, we're not looking for a destination type place, we're not looking for the pickleball courts where people are driving from all over the place, or the Y, or anything like, we're looking for something just for the neighborhood kids, who can ride a bike, skate over, walk over, and get a game going. So, and so they were the two big things that we found out we really could overcome by just making this a neighborhood style court. Anyway, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and if there's any questions, happy to talk about it. Thank you very much, appreciate hearing me.
Thank you. And sir?
Good evening. Brian Ramon of the Ninth Ward. I'm wearing black, of course, because I'm in solidarity with tens of thousands of Eagle fans who are in mourning today. I think I have a seventy-two hour window to go through that mourning process, and then I'll be able to come out on the other side. But one thing I did want to mention, of course, is one of the key players in that, in that team is Jason Kelsey, and he happens to be a Haverford resident. So we have quite a few members of the Eagles, both on the playing side and on the front office side and the office side, that are residents of Haverford Township, so shout out to them who brought us a lot of joy this year, maybe not quite all the way to where we wanted to be, but there's always next year. I know, we say that way too often. Also, in an ancillary mode, going into athletics, Haverford High School, we've gone to cheer the football teams and the basketball teams, and revel in their success. Now, one of the things that we take for granted is the young ladies who are on the sidelines who are cheerleaders, and a lot of times, for many years, the cheerleaders were just considered, hey, you know, they do, they're great, they're good for spirit. But one of the things that we, many people don't realize is that the cheerleading program at Haverford High School, they're very athletic, and in fact, they're one of the better programs when it comes to cheerleading competitions. They have done some very amazing things over the last few years. This year, they had Hi-Hops, they went to a regional competition a couple of weeks ago, and finished a disappointing second, they thought they were going to win, but they still managed to qualify for the Nationals this past weekend in Florida. Now, that's a pretty daunting competition because you have very athletic cheerleading teams from all over the country. Well, they just returned home from Florida today, finishing second in the nation in that cheerleading competition. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge the Haverford cheerleaders for a phenomenal competition. It was, I'm sure that they're very excited, I'm sure they're exhausted getting back from Florida today, and still a little bummed. They're also probably wearing black as well. So thank you for allowing me to do that. One quick question I had on one agenda item was on the veneer. That's the veneer that I believe is the one that was, kind of fell apart. I was just curious, I know it's only a small expenditure, twenty-three thousand or so dollars, but where is that money coming from? And is that, is someone being held accountable for an engineering flaw or, or a construction flaw, and hopefully that's not coming out of general funds? In other words, taxpayers paying for somebody else's mistake? Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. So, to answer that specific question, that is also the subject of litigation. In the meanwhile, to the extent that we need to mitigate our damages, fix our damages, keep things from getting worse, the township needs to act the way the township's doing, including fixing that. But it is all wrapped up in litigation associated with the responsible parties for the damage that's taken place. So I do appreciate your comments, and I assure you that our township manager and our township solicitor are stewards, not just of our existing assets, but of those potential assets that are associated with potential recoveries and lawsuits against people ultimately responsible for financial and physical loss to the township. So thank you for bringing that up. Is there anybody else who has anything to share or discuss this evening? Okay, we will move on to new business. Is there any new business from any of my colleagues tonight? For our board? Hearing none, we will move to other business. And I will begin with Commissioner Gondak.
Thank you very much. Not too much going on. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. One is, as anyone who was here today noticed, noted that we tabled one of the things on the agenda, that was with regard to some open commission committees, citizen committees that are out there. I believe there's currently some open spots on civil service, human relations, the skating rink, and shade tree, so there is still time, if you're interested, to submit your letter of interest and resume. The board will be conducting interviews of anyone who expresses an interest in those positions, and hopefully we can get those filled at the next meeting or so on. The other thing I'd just like to highlight is, and I don't think it was brought up earlier, but just as a friendly reminder, starting the week of, I believe, February twenty-seventh is when Aqua is starting their big project on Lawrence Road, where there will be times for, during the day, where Lawrence between Westchester Pike and Eagle Road will be shut down. So be conscientious of that in your travels and your planning. I would also just make a request to the chief that some stepped-up police enforcement can occur regarding this issue. This issue has a lot of residents of the First Ward concerned, namely because it's going to push significant more traffic down Westchester Pike, blocking the intersections of Glendale and Glengarry, and also inevitably, it's going to push more traffic onto Briarwood, it's going to push more traffic onto Robinson and Upland. And so we would just respectfully ask, and obviously the police do a great job of enforcing our traffic laws, but just a little bit of extra vigilance in our neighborhoods during this project, because I think that we're probably going to be getting an influx of calls from concerned residents. Happy early Valentine's Day to everyone, I hope everyone also enjoys the upcoming President's Day weekend. You know, I, you know, in honor of Black History Month also, you know, obviously, we passed a resolution with regards to that today, and I would just say that in going along with that resolution, you know, everyone should, you know, I encourage everyone to kind of reflect on what that resolution means and what Black History Month means. And, you know, I, I think for me, it's a time where, you know, we reflect on the past to use that to build a better future, and, and, you know, learn from kind of past mistakes in order to address them, in order to move forward, to get us to a society where, you know, we obviously aren't yet, but hopefully we'll get there one day, where people don't see the difference in color, or race, or ethnicity, sex, gender, any of those characteristics, or physical characteristics, and just see people as other people, and just treat each other with respect. And that's about it. We've had a pretty mild winter so far, knock on wood. Hopefully, we can close it out with an equally mild, closing to the winter. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Yeah, when we get a huge ice storm next week, we're all going to blame you. But at least we have a lot of salt. Commissioner Forstie Grub.
I think I'd have to say that it's not, lots of people are sad that we haven't had a snow day, because my students were really hoping that the Eagles would win, not only because the Eagles would win, but they might have gotten a day off so they could go to a parade. So there was that additional layer of sadness at the school where I teach, and I'm sure lots of other schools. I'd like to say congratulations to Sergeant Michael Kelly. It is a wonderful event to see someone promoted, and I was glad to be here to be witness, and to see all the policemen and their families coming to witness that, too. That is a testament to the police department, so thank you. I'd also like to thank Phil Goldsmith, President of the Library Board, and Sukrit Goswami, the Library Director, for presenting the information about the renovated and expanded library that will serve the needs of our community, not just for the next ten years, but for many, many, many years in the future. It is a very exciting time, and I was thrilled to see so much. So many people come forward to express their support of this project, so that, that fifth building that Mr. Kelly named will finally be made, made suitable for all of us. I'd also like to remind everyone that the, the many fire companies throughout the township are in their membership drive, and these are all volunteer firefighters, they're, they're not paid, and so donations go to the annual budget to maintain building and equipment. So I would encourage everyone to make the donation they can to support these men and women who will come and put out the fire, God forbid, if it happens at your house. So thank you so much, and I hope everyone has a lovely Valentine's Day, and that you read a book by a black author, or read, read a poem or something, that's, that's my bailiwick, so I'm always pushing those books, so thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie Grub. Mr. McCluskey.
Thanks. I feel like I've, I've spoken enough words about the library the last couple of years. I'm excited that we're hopefully moving towards a resolution of that, but I think it was a very good presentation by the library tonight, and it just outlines that we're going to have a responsible construction project, but it's going to create something that everyone in this community can be proud of. I'm looking forward to it. I, like everyone else, I'm probably dragging a little bit today, and our meeting's late, but it, after the Eagles game yesterday, I just, I just wanted to say, sports and the Eagles, you know, I thought about this during the day as I was sort of counting down the minutes till the game started. They really do have a power to unify our city and the entire Delaware Valley. There's a pride and a camaraderie that we all share when it involves the Eagles. There's a shared excitement, there's shared disappointment. It's, it's a shared experience, you know, it's, it's something that I know when I, when I went away for school, and it's, it's part of what, you know, defined us as Philadelphians. And there's value in that, there's value for the community, there's value for us here in Haver Town. I thought about it yesterday when my out-of-state in-laws sent me a meme of Go Birds as sort of the universal thank you, the universal hello, saying, when you're holding a door for someone at Wawa, or you're, you're saying hello, or you're picking up your coffee. And then I thought of it in Wawa. It was really yesterday, if you were in any, any Wawa in the, in the region, you know, it was a community gathering, everyone was grabbing coffee, everybody was wearing their green, everybody was wearing their Eagles shirt, everybody was anticipating where they were going to go to watch the game, and everyone was saying hello to everyone, and everyone was smiling. This was obviously before the game started. But none, none of our arguments that we have in, in society existed, and, and, you know, I think that's normally the case in, in Wawa's and other sort of gatherings like that, our, our arguments where we disagree about things that we disagree with here don't exist there. So, you know, I, I, I thought about it, and obviously, our meetings here are designed for public discourse, and, and I feel like I've been around long enough, and I know that this year's an election year, so I know people get squirrely with that. And I know social media is what it is, and I know Facebook certainly is what, what, what it is. But I think there's a lesson in that shared community we experienced yesterday with, with the Eagles. We have, we have so much more in common in Haverford Township here. We're all, we're all neighbors, we're all living in this community together. We're going to have disagreements, there's going to be a discourse of ideas, we're probably going to disagree, sometimes some of us will vote no, sometimes some of us will vote yes, and that's all part of a functioning democracy, but there are lines, right? There, there's lines because all of us are residents and all of us are neighbors. And anytime it spills into personal attacks that we see, or attacks on someone outside of those established public forums that we have, like at this microphone, or at our microphones up here, we, we lose something, and we should demand better of that of ourselves and of our, and of our neighbors. You know, I, our, our public discourse that we have here should be respectful and should be an exchange of ideas that creates a functioning democracy, but it doesn't need to spill into our gathering places that they talked about the library, and it certainly doesn't need to spill into, you know, it certainly doesn't need to spill into Wawa, it certainly doesn't need to spill into the Acme or the Giant. So let's treat each other with disrespect and exchange our ideas, because we're all living in this town, and, and I think we need to hold ourselves as a board to that standard. And, you know, really, over the last couple of weeks, I think, you know, Eagles fans sort of reminded of us of that, that And, you know, really over the last couple of weeks, I think, you know, Eagles fans sort of reminded of us of that opportunity. So let's take the last couple of weeks and bring it into 2023. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. I want to just make a quick comment about Black History Month. I'm glad that we passed the resolution. The theme one of our speakers brought up was resistance, and that makes me think about just the power of the vote as sort of the great equalizer and how hard we've had to work for that vote, and that's because we all have that power. So we wouldn't have had to fight so hard for it if it wasn't powerful. Couple of things, and then I need to, I want to address Polo Field, the road diet. As someone mentioned, it does go right through the fifth ward and the sixth ward. I'm planned to be asking PennDOT if they can speak with us to give us a chance to ask more questions about the road diet. So I hear what people are saying and communicating with me about it. Again, the library, I'm very excited. It's late. We'll have a lot of time to talk about it. But I do think we have a real resource in Sukrit and Phil. Sukrit is one of the most humble people ever, but he's really a leader in the library world, and we're lucky to have him. He takes leadership roles and really thinks innovatively. So I do want to take a minute to address publicly the tentative agreement that would allow Black Rock Middle School and Lower Marion baseball softball teams to use the Polo Field for practices and games. These teams would replace other Lower Marion teams that already play on those two fields and is the same as Lower Marion's current use of Polo Field for softball and baseball. Polo Field is a historic park. It's in the midst of a crowded neighborhood. It has an 80-year history that's shared by two townships. It was gifted by a Haverford resident back in the 1940s. So when the request came to us, we held an open meeting last February, and I've mentioned it up here before. I listened to residents' concerns. I listened to their wishes for the park. That was important to me as a new commissioner. Since then, in addition to many individual conversations, I've visited Polo Field in all different kinds of weather, different seasons. I've visited with other commissioners from both townships. I've visited with the Chief of Police, with the Township Manager. And over the course of a year, we worked and coordinated to come up with an agreement that was acceptable to us and that we thought would benefit Haverford Township. So last week, February 2nd, about 60 people attended a forum that we held at the crack regarding the agreement that we announced the week before. So we've had a lot of productive ideas from the community, but I want to talk about three central requirements of the tentative agreement that are important to Haverford and in particular to the fifth ward. So the agreement, the tentative agreement that we've been discussing, gives Haverford Township ownership of and full control over the 18-acre Polo Field. That would allow us to steward this land properly in the future. I believe that if we want to improve Polo Field for Haverford residents, Haverford Township must own the field first. As a public good, the park should be stewarded by the township as all of our other township parks are. It's also in alignment with the deed of the gift for the field in 1942. The donor asked that the land be forever used as a playfield, park, or playground. The second reason I support the tentative agreement is that it's directly responsive to our neighbors, to fifth ward neighbors. After February 22nd, I heard concerns about how the field would be used. I heard about bus parking and whether the look and lack of structures would be maintained. These three issues have been addressed in the following ways. There would be no increase in use or intensity of use being proposed for the Black Rock teams. Lower Marion already permits these fields in the spring under our ad hoc agreement in the same way at the same time during the same time slots in the spring. There would be no structures built of any kind, lights, scoreboards, concrete dugouts included. I'm told the field will look much like the fields at McMorran Park in Lower Marion, and it's very similar to how they look now on Polo. There would be no bus parking on the streets of the township allowed, no idling, and the PD has, will enforce that. Drop-off on Railroad Avenue will most likely slow traffic slightly during drop-off and pickup. There would only be buses, that would only take about eight minutes maximum. The buses would also park near Leddington Library and Bryn Mawr in Lower Marion. The last reason I want to point out why I am supporting this tentative agreement is we're able to get a $275,000 investment into community spaces on the field. So that is money that can directly benefit the township, the residents that live near Polo Field. It will make it more attractive to users of the park, not just users of the athletic fields. Some of the things that we're looking at have tried to be directly responsive to neighbors. We're looking at expanding the playground footprint. We're looking at a small seating area with shelter and trees and perhaps a memorial to the late Commissioner Andy Lewis. I heard about flooding in the southeastern corner of the fields. We're hoping to fund a stormwater management study that can address some of that, beginning to address it. This isn't a one-shot deal that we can fix everything. We need more trees in the park. The agreement includes funding for that. We need a consistent border along the Long Penn Street border, and that's something that we're looking into correcting as well. And perhaps what I heard about the most was the need to clarify maintenance responsibilities, renegotiate the use agreement between the two townships, and try to up the maintenance standards slightly. So that, again, is really important to the tentative agreement that we're able to do that. One of my goals is to ensure that there are enough opportunities for resident input. I think the most important thing that came out of our meeting on the second was a commitment from the townships to share a draft tentative agreement once we have it and hold another open forum and as many public forums as we can to make sure that we're getting people's input. I'm sorry to take so much time, but thank you for listening. And the next step will be, among other things, a survey so that people can be sure that their ideas are heard and that they're able to give feedback on these potential improvements for the park. I think this is a real opportunity for Polo Field and the whole neighborhood. And that's all I have for the night. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Mr. Quinn.
Well, thank you. And as Kevin said about the, I think everybody came as one during the Eagles run and during the Phillies run, too. You can see the stats down in other cities. The crime was down. So when our sports teams do well, I guess the crime goes down, too. So that was good. And tonight, we saw the police here. The police in this town, they always come out to support to support their friends when they get O-R-O promoted. So I think that's great. I think that says a lot about our police force and our leadership here, too. And also pay your fire dues. As Terry said, there were some big fires in surrounding towns in the past few weeks, and I know our fire companies were all there. And last night was a historic night where there were two black quarterbacks playing in the game. And that was the first time that that's ever happened. So that's a big deal. Although it was a tough loss, I got some good news. Spring is about to be here. The Phils start this week, so everything's great. There won't be snow, so that's all good. So I think everybody have a great, great, great night.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Hart.
Yes, I wanted to thank our speakers tonight who spoke in support of an improved road diet on Haverford Road. A well-done road diet would not only be a great opportunity to improve traffic safety on what is now considered a high accident area, but it would be a tremendous opportunity to improve pedestrian and biking safety in our township. It's probably the biggest step we could take in the 30 years I've been here, the best thing that we could do to improve pedestrian and biking safety. I'm hopeful that while we should have hearings and a discussion, that we can speak as, in one voice, to PennDOT to, in support of an improved road diet on Haverford Road. So I'm hopeful that that's the ultimate, ultimately, what will come out of this. Just a couple of other things. Brooklyn Park Steering Committee continues to meet. The next public meeting will be held on March 29th. Again, we're looking to try to have a final plan presented to the board by the summer. The spring racing season will get kicked off with a 5K, the Sacred Heart 5K run on March 4th. And the Phillies' spring training opens Thursday, which is after the 72 Hours. So you can take the black off, and we can get ready for the big red on. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner Wexler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first offer my congratulations to Sergeant Michael Kenny. I remember the day we swore him in, so I've been here way too long, I guess. I guess he's like a 12-year veteran, I think. So it's interesting. It's great to see. He looks as young as he did 12 years ago, and I don't. The other thing is the Hilltop Civic Association has changed their meeting due to logistical reasons to a virtual meeting on March 1st. So if anybody would like to attend, just send me your email. I'll get you the link so you can listen to their meeting. We talked about the library, the fifth building. There's an anonymous building, you know, just not to tout ourselves, but we also had a major renovation of our township maintenance facilities that occurred. And that was a huge project, out of the limelight. I always equate something like, we do like that to putting a roof on your house. You know, you spend $12,000 to $15,000 to put a new roof on it. Nobody walking their dog or coming down your street says, hey, gee, great roof. But if you didn't have it, your house would fall apart. So we did multiple other major projects to do the maintenance facility for all those trash trucks, all the new police vehicles and all that stuff, so that our mechanics can maintain that fleet that we obviously spend a lot of money on updating that fleet. I just wanted to point that out. Also want to thank the library and Phil, all the staff for a great thing. Some of the people that spoke, you know, the impression, I got the, at least I got the impression, we have approved the project. So this is moving forward. We got the schedule. Now it's going. We've already allocated that money. So thank you for those people that came up and in support of it. But it's been, it's being supported by this group. It's been approved. We're moving forward. Finally, it took a long time, and I go back to when I started in 2008. Some of those ideas that Commissioner Gondak was asking about were mentioned back there and the people that spoke before this board about what they wanted to see out of the library. So it's been ongoing, and they've done a great job in keeping current with all their organizations that keep them up to date on how new libraries should be. And then I'd just like to say two other things on the security that Ms. Dunne who raised. I hope that the police department will take a good look at that. We've had to go to the extent to put cameras in our parking lot at the dog park, and I think probably the internal camera system at the Y should start to rival Coles and the other places that we need to take a look and maybe advise them on their physical security as well as that so we can help with that rising crime problem there. And then also congratulate on Black History Month. I'd like to think that we could, as the woman said, we could get, that we don't have that. But history is history. We got to go back. It happened. We have to study it. We have to look at it. I'm proud of my Irish and Romanian roots and German roots, just as any African American would be proud or black America would be proud of their roots, their family, their struggles they go through. So I think we'll always have to look back and have some form of appreciation for all our ethnic histories of this big, great melting pot that we live in. So we can't forget it. We can't meld it in. It's part of the history. It's part of everyone's heritage. So it's important that we continue to study, in my mind. But I hope we can live together and do that. And my wife always says, you know, Father's Day is the worst, every day is Father's Day, but not every day is Mother's Day. So, but go on there. But so hopefully we can all live together. But I think it's important that we look back and study all the wrongs that have happened over the centuries in this country and learn from them. So there's always an important way to look at history, or else we're going to be repeating it, and we don't want to do that. We want to grow it. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Commissioner Trombetta.
Thank you. It's hard going second to last because I just want to just repeat what everybody else just said. They were amazing comments, so ditto. But I also want to thank Mr. Ventura for coming tonight. It's nice to meet you in person. As he mentioned, we have been in conversation for about a year now with his ideas for potentially having a hockey court at Paddock Park. It is a challenge. You know, I say this in partial jest, but when I ran for commissioner, I knew I'd have, you know, issues around speeding, maybe plowing or potholes, but I never anticipated the number of challenges or issues that are posed to me about our parks and, you know, competing interests. There's a lot of different people who want different things. And, you know, I'm doing my best to try to navigate that, so thanks for bearing with me. And I look forward to further conversation with you and our Parks and Recreation Department. I did want to mention, and I'll apologize, too, to Commissioner Gondak. Commissioner McCloskey and I are hosting, and we'd love to have you serve as a co-host, Commissioner Gondak, a virtual meeting on February 21st at 7:00 PM to discuss the Lawrence Road project. We've invited Aqua to come and share their plans, and we'll have, hopefully, somebody from the police department there to talk about just how to navigate that. It's quite an undertaking, and I do expect it will inconvenience some of our residents for a timeframe, but this is part of their infrastructure improvement program. We've also invited Pico to come as well because they are doing work in the Linwood Park area. So we want to make sure that we're all encompassing in this conversation and making sure that we're hearing from our residents about any concerns they have and certainly allowing them to ask questions. But hopefully Aqua and Pico are able to offer a whole bunch of helpful information for us. And the only other thing I'll say about the Eagles, I mean, it was a really tough game, and I was sad afterwards. And to Commissioner McCloskey's point, I was, I love a good football game, actually. But, and I love sports, but really what made me sad at the end of the day was losing that sense of unity and that sense of community. We were, you know, we had my son dressed in an Eagles outfit yesterday, and people just out of nowhere were, you know, chanting, "Eh, gee!", and it was amazing. And I think that's the part that I'll miss. It's not the game and winning the game. It's the lack of a parade, the lack of a little more time-togetherness, you know. And so I'm sorry for that, but I'm looking forward to the Phillies' season. And I think that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. Let me thank everybody that participated in tonight's meeting. This was a meeting where, between planned presentations from some of our volunteer groups to very excellent advocacy done by just our fellow citizens. This was without our intention to start it this way, I think, an exceptional meeting that combined good work from my colleagues on this board with really excellent advocacy and participation from our constituents and from our fellow neighbors here in the township. So I thank you all who came tonight and had something to offer, had information to give us, had positions to advocate, had support for actions we've taken or some legitimate criticism for things we should do better. So I found that to be very fortifying tonight. And it makes our job easier when we know that people care and care enough to come out and put themselves on the line and say the things they said. So I thank all of you for that. I have, one privilege I have as the president of this board is that I get to sign the resolutions, and it was my privilege to sign tonight's Black History Month resolution. And what I really appreciated was at the beginning of it, where we noted various roles that black Americans have played. And one of those most important roles is civil rights leaders. leaders. And honestly, they have disproportionately represented the civil rights leaders in our country in the last two centuries, and it's worth all of us remembering that, remembering just how much was at stake for folks who fought for the advancement of minorities in our country, and we all owe them a great debt of gratitude. And the least we can do as a township is to note first every February, and then hopefully one day, every day, as a day to remember the contributions of black Americans. So with that, I will bid everyone good night and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Adjourned.
Could I add something?
Yes.
Talking about Aqua, I received information late today that the start date on that project is 3/1, March 1st for Lawrence Road. We met with Aqua today to send it to police details. We have multiple police officers down there, especially around the starting time, to help that traffic flow down there. So 3/1, we will meet with them again next week to finalize more information as we move forward.
Thank you, Chief Ayala. Everybody got that? It's clear that March 1st will be the start of the Lawrence Road project. With that, I will entertain once again a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.